Good evening. The November 9th, 2017 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be given by Reverend Evan Doley, the Associate Minister of Family Life at First Christian Church. Please rise.
Will you join me in prayer? "You, O God, are the God of all people, in all places, and at all times. We are thankful that Longview is a diverse and vibrant city that brings together the blending of cultures and races, religious expressions, belief systems, and languages. All of these parts coalesce into a beautiful picture and reflection of you, O God. We are thankful for those who have answered the call for service in the city of Longview, for the city council, the police, the firefighters, the first responders. We ask that you bless them abundantly as they continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. O God, there are times when the chaos of this world is too much. There are times when we feel as if evil is triumphing over good. In your divine mercy, send your spirit to comfort our souls, to ease our anxiety, and to remind us that you will never leave us nor forsake us. Our hearts break and ache as we remember those who are affected by the deadly attack in New York City and Sutherland Springs. May our immediate reaction not be revenge or hatred of other, rather compassion and comfort, mercy, and peace for all who are affected by this tragedy. We remember those who struggle for the basics of life in our city: food, water, adequate shelter, and warm from the bitter cold. Rise up leaders in our community to respond to these needs with compassion, and love, and grace. We remember those who are currently experiencing homelessness. May we not see them as a product of their decisions or the way life has happened to them, but as people who have been made in your holy and divine image. Strengthen our community and its leaders not to shun the other or to make grand characterizations, rather to find meaningful and impactful ways to help, guide, and serve those in need. May the decisions made in this chamber not reflect personal convictions or partisan politics, but what is best for the city of Longview, its citizens, and its visitors. We seek now your guidance, now and in the days to come. Give success to the work of our hands, and in the name of Jesus the Christ, the Holy One of God, we pray. Amen."
Will you join me now on the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Reverend Doley. Tonight's employee recognition is one of those very special ones. Not that they aren't all special, but this has special meaning to us tonight. This week, the Longview community lost someone very special. For several decades, Elaine Reynolds has been instrumental, helping coordinate many of Longview's marquee events, including the Great Texas Balloon Race, Alley Fest, Downtown Live, and the Christmas Parade, just to name a few. After serving as a super volunteer for the Great Texas Balloon Race in the 1990s, Elaine began working full-time for the Convention and Visitors Bureau at the Longview Chamber of Commerce in 1995. During her time there, she served in a variety of roles, including the Downtown Development Director. In 2015, she became a city employee as a tourism and events coordinator with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, moved under city administration. Elaine never met a stranger and was a great connector of people. She had hundreds of friends who were always at the ready to help with whatever event Elaine was organizing. As part of the Great Texas Balloon Race, she was the primary contact for all the pilots and developed friendships with balloonists all over the country. She loved and supported local musicians and helped grow Downtown Live into the successful event it is today. Elaine made many lasting impacts in downtown and throughout Longview, but perhaps her biggest impact will be that she connected with so many individuals and got them involved in making Longview better. A couple months ago, the Parks Board approved the recommendation of naming the stage at Heritage Plaza as Elaine Reynolds' Stage. On October 6th, Elaine was able to attend the ceremony to celebrate that honor. Tonight, we had the opportunity to make a stage naming official. Here's a video from the October 6th ceremony at Heritage Plaza.
Elaine Reynolds has been involved with our organization since the inception. Board members have come and gone, and some have even come back again, but Elaine has never left. It is safe to say that Elaine has donated more of her time to downtown Longview than any city employee or board member ever has or probably ever will. We feel that there is no better way to honor who I affectionately call Miss Downtown than to name this stage that rests in the heart of this city that she has worked so tirelessly to improve and will bring joy to its citizens for years to come. Thank you for the joy that you have brought my family and this city. We love you, Elaine.
Megan, Jennifer, would you all please come forward? We talked about this. We weren't going to cry. Didn't we talk about this? All of us, we agreed together, we're going to cry? Last night, we cried. Tonight, we're celebrating, right? These are Elaine's daughters, and these girls have meant so much to not only Elaine, but to our city, and I've watched them grow up. I've known Elaine since my kids started playing girls softball. She was very big in the girls softball, and Elaine has always been a huge advocate for people, and people are what make Longview so great, and Elaine's what makes Longview great. People like Elaine are irreplaceable. And it's hard, right? I know. But we're not crying tonight. We're celebrating Elaine, and so I want you all to know how much we appreciate your mom. We love her. We'll miss her. We all will, but we know she's in a better place now, and that's all we can ever hope for in life, is to be in that better place. So I know that we're all going to be sad. It's going to be hard to handle it for a few days, and for a week, and for months, and for years, because it never goes away. But her memory will always be here with us, and we appreciate you all and for sharing your mom with us for all these years. So what I would like to do now is we're going to move Action Item D forward. Scott Karen, would you please come forward? We're going to move this item forward. We're going to stand right here, Scott, while you talk about it. You're going to name the stage at Heritage Plaza.
Well, I don't know that there's anything else that I can add to what was already shown or the mayor has said already, but the Park Board did unanimously approve the resolution for the naming of the stage for Elaine Reynolds. It has also been published in the newspaper two times, as required in the ordinance, and so before you tonight, we're requesting the resolution be approved to name the stage at Heritage Plaza for Elaine Reynolds.
Wow. You have a chance to call that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So forevermore, it will be the stage Elaine Reynolds at Heritage Plaza. Thank you all so much, ladies. Okay. Next, we are to community recognition. Who would have thought having an idea to have drive-through flu shots would make a difference in the community of Longview for years to come? Interesting, isn't it? Well, that's what's happened. What started as an agenda to provide flu shots for elderly people who couldn't get out of a car, Lewis Morgan Drugs started providing flu shots, and it got to where it was pretty busy. And so recruitment was needed to help that. And from that initiative came Back the Blue and Rally the Red. And two ladies have been very instrumental in making this happen, and they think they're here to talk about what they've done, and they have no idea that they're not. Y'all aren't speaking tonight. I'm speaking about you. Ms. Judy Littenberg and Ms. Kathy Holbert, please come forward.
You rascal.
I know. It's terrible, isn't it? But we love surprises. I want you all to know, these two ladies have been so instrumental in helping our city, and there is no way on earth they would have come here if they knew they were going to get recognized. They were coming here to give you an update on what they've accomplished, so I'm going to tell you what they've accomplished. What they've done, they raised money for our Back the Blue, they had an initiative to Rally the Red, they had an event at Lewis Morgan's a few weeks ago to raise money for the bulletproof vests for the firefighters. We needed 55 vests, and we raised it so quick their heads spun, and they raised enough for 65 or however many more. Doesn't matter. The point being, in one event, they took care of this because they're doers. They're not talkers. And we need so many more doers in Longview, and you ladies are the epitome of what community recognition is about. You see a need, you go out there, and you provide that need. And I just want to tell you how much we appreciate you from the city of Longview. I know these two gentlemen right here really appreciate you, and everyone that will put one of those vests on will appreciate you forever. You'll save lives. You'll save families. You do things that you don't even know you've done, but you really step up and you make a difference, and we love you. We thank you all so much.
It was fun.
Thank you all. We appreciate you. Isn't this fun? This is fun. Okay. We are to citizen comment. I have one speaker card. Mr. Eddie Dickerd.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Mack.
Chief Bishop, our chief.
I just wanted to address you now, on behalf of the homeless people, again, as I did several months ago. I've seen a lot of progress, but Chief Bishop and me had a meeting about 10 minutes before we came in here tonight. There's still some problems that need to be solved with some of his officers and the homeless people, and he assured me he's going to take care of that problem for me, and I would like to thank him for that. I'd also like to tell him I'm very blessed that he has some wonderful senior officers on his staff. There are sergeants, captains, lieutenants, so on, and assistant chiefs. They have helped me tremendously over the last year, and I have a ministry, and it's called Big Man with a Big Heart Ministries, and I'm a licensed minister. In my ministry, I feel like God has called me, because I've been homeless for three years myself, and I've lived in the missions, I've lived on the streets. I camp out when it's pretty weathered with the guys and the women. I minister to them. I feel like the Lord has called me to do that. I know where to take them and to get help, because I've been there myself. And a lot of them will not ask for help, and you can't help them if they won't let you help them. I love them anyway, and I care about them. I get them food. I'll give them clothes, whatever I can do to help them in any way. I just want to say thank you. I would appreciate the city council's support to continue to, let's try to get those police officers to work with the homeless, let's get that grant, or whatever we've got to do that y'all, through your task force, had mentioned, and I just hope and pray, and I'm praying hard, that that's going to happen, and I want to be a part in helping in any way I can. Thank you, Mayor Mack.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerd, and it will happen. Trust me. Thank you, sir. Ms. Judy, I have a speaker card. Do you want to speak, or are you good?
Well, no, I will speak.
Come on.
Always.
You took the time to fill it out. You deserve to speak.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all, and thank the mayor, and I want to thank the city council. Most of all, I want to thank J.P. Stillman. We, I could not have used 10 tablets and written down plans for my event, and it turned out as good as it turned out. They kept our parking lot full of big red trucks. They repelled, he wouldn't let me repel, but we'll talk about that later. The high-water rescue guys were gracious enough to get in the dunking booth. Who would have thought it was going to be 32 degrees that morning? And the little children had fun dunking the firemen, and we have had so much feedback, and everybody had a great, great time. And we're just blessed to have people like this that love our city and want to help us the way they do. And we had several people, I was hoping to come with a page that was stamped "Done", but we did have several people that wanted us to invoice them, and we have no fear that they're not going to come forward, but we will have enough vests to satisfy the need for all of these first responders. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Judy. I have no other speaker comments. Anyone else like to speak that hasn't filled out a card? Very well. Public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard. We've had a busy few weeks since our last meeting. Back on December 19th, we again graduated our 26 Citizens Police Academy that we do each fall. In this particular class here, we had 35 individuals that graduated from the Citizens Police Academy, and I want to thank them for taking their time to spend several weeks with us learning more about the police department and how we operate. On October 26th, we had the opportunity to commission our newest officer, Officer Shelby Ferris, completed the East Texas Police Academy. We commissioned her as a police officer, and she's currently in field training at this time. Tonight, I'd also like to announce, if you remember last year, we began a teen police academy, Citizens Police Academy, designed specifically for teens. When we initiated this last year, it was so popular that we ended up doing two of them. So we're getting ready to accept applications for our next teen police academy that will run from January 22nd to March 5th of 2018. The application is up on our website at longviewpolice.com, or if individuals want more information, they can contact Officer Roger Askew at 903-235-2170. I'd like to thank Laterno University Athletic Department for inviting the police department to come play in their celebrity softball tournament against the fire department. It was a good time. We had a good time. As you can see, we showed up with a lot of determination. We made the catch. We had a good time in fellowship with the fire department and the police department coming together for a good cause, to raise money for charity, but we fell a little short. The fire department won 10 to 7, but it could have gone either way at any minute. It just so happened to be there at the end of the game, so congratulations to Chief Stillman. We all know about the incident that happened at Sutherland Springs a few days ago. One of the things, this past week, I've received several calls from some pastors here in town. We fielded some calls about security and safety at different congregations in town. So I just kind of wanted to throw this out there, that we're in the process of putting together a church safety seminar. Probably by the next meeting, I'll come back with a date, time, and a place. This is going to be a whole day to spend informing and providing information to our congregations and their staff and the members of the church on different things that they can do to help secure their facilities and their place of worship and have a little extra security. So next meeting, I'll come forward, and I'll have a little bit more information on that. Also, it's also that time of year again when our Blue Santa starts asking for donations. Anybody that's interested in donating either toys or monetary funds can contact the police department, or they can go to longviewtexas.gov/Bluesanta, and the information will be there on how they can participate in this good program to help the needy families at this time of the year. So, any questions? Oh, Dr. Mack, one other thing. Nobody got hurt.
Okay. I got to throw the first pitch out with the police and fire softball game, and my only concern was, no one can get hurt, because we can't replace you guys. You cannot be getting hurt playing softball. We need you on the job. But it was a fun day, a fun event. Laterno put in a good thing for everybody, but I'm glad that it worked out well. Thank you, guys.
Can you throw a strike?
I rolled it. I made sure it got to the plate. Chief Stillman.
Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to share some things that have been happening in the fire department. Even though most of them have already been covered, I'm going to recap them just briefly. Rally the Red was a great time, and Judy, I appreciate the kind words, but I've got to sit here and tell you, I had very little to do with that, and I've got to give a shout out to our seashift crews that were on duty that day, and Ayesha Robinson from our Fire Marshal's Office coordinating with Judy, who ran point on this. This was a great event, and we appreciate the opportunity, and it's definitely going to make a difference in the fire department in the way that we operate. So thank the community for coming out and supporting this event. Yeah, the softball game, we had a great time, and again, give a quick shout out to Laterno. I hope we do this on a more regular basis. We had an awesome time. I did bring the trophy just to pay you back. And Chief Bishop left before he got the participant trophy, so I promised the folks at Laterno that I'd present him with the trophy. So I'm done with that. The fire department, the score probably would have been a little bit different if the fire department would have had a better pitcher, is all I've got to say. So we'll move on from that. Moving on, we have bowling coming up. It will be the next slide, and we bowl for the doors thing next week, so we're looking forward to that next opportunity. The fire department does have a hiring process open right now. We're accepting applications for people that are already certified as firefighters and paramedics. That process does shut down next Friday, so anyone interested, please go to the fire department of the city's website to get more information about that. You know, we're approaching the winter months and the holiday seasons, and one thing that we always see in the fire department, in my 27 years, it's never failed, that between the months of November and February, our structure fires definitely increase because of the activity. Heating, cooking, and candles are probably three of the biggest causes of structure fires that we see during this time of year as we enter into the holiday season and the cooler months. So we just want people, we want to urge you to be safe with any of these three aspects around your home, because they definitely are one of our number-one leading causes of structure fires, so please be careful. Code Red, I'm going to keep talking about this one. Please sign up for Code Red if you're not already, to get these emergency notifications warnings straight to your phone to tell you what's going on in times of natural disaster. It's a free service. It's easy to do. EMS subscription, this is my last one. I've got, well, this is my last slide for tonight, but I actually have one more month of talking about this. Our EMS subscription program is open for applicants. That closes on December 31st, and this will cover you for the calendar year 2018. So again, check out the fire department's website for more information on that. Great way to save some money if you have to use an ambulance. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Chief, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You guys are so entertaining. I just love this. Where to consent agenda? Anyone have anything they'd like to pull off for a separate discussion?
I have a comment on one of them, Mayor.
Okay.
Item F, sanitation truck lease purchase. I questioned why we were bidding that on a taxable basis rather than tax-exempt, which tax-exempt would have been about a percentage point lower, but I was reminded that the city has an annual quota of what's known as bank-qualified tax-exempt bonds, and we authorize LeadCo to issue some refinancing bonds and new bonds for the local match for our trail project. So I was satisfied with the answer, and I can go along with it.
Then is there a motion?
Move to approve.
All in favor? Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, having election item, considering ordinance calling a special election to fill an unexpired term of city council member district three on February 3rd, 2018. Ms. Ballinger.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Willard. This item is to request an approval for an election on February 3rd, 2018, for the unexpired term of council member district number three. Ms. Williams has announced her intended candidacy for another position, not in the city. Filing for the February 3rd, 2018 election will begin tomorrow at 8:00 a.m., and it will go through November 10th, I mean, Monday, December 4th. Early voting will begin on January 17th and go through January 30th. Are you, do you have any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Ballinger? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Ballinger. We're going to table Action Item A and Action Item B, because we need more time to get legal issues taken care of and get some surveying done. This is a very complex transaction that is requiring some additional time, so we'll hope to have that on our December board meeting and move that forward. Any questions on that tabling? Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We'll consider resolution authorizing a direct city manager, or the city manager does need to execute documents to help House of Disciples for $44,304 for litter cleanup service programs. Mr. Archer.
Mayor Mack, Council, Mr. Willard, thank you all for having me tonight. This resolution before you would be authorizing us entering into agreement with House of Disciples for litter collection. This stems from an idea that came from Mayor Mack's Homeless Task Force. The idea is that we have some funding set aside now for litter collection. That funding would then be taken and used for hiring people through House of Disciples. This will give those individuals an opportunity to better their situation and give them an opportunity to be able to be paid while they do that. And so it's working the program where before, we did hire people to pick up the litter, but there wasn't really a program with that, and so this will help a lot. So this program will not be limited to only the House of Disciples residents, and we have Tim here, Tim Wiseman with House of Disciples, and of course, I'm here to answer any questions that y'all may have. Do I, and first, want to say thank you for your open-mindedness and ability to look ahead and see how we might help this program, because it's a learning process for all of us. It's not something any of us have ever done. The city's never done this type of thing. Our community's never done this type of thing. But I appreciate your willingness, and obviously, Tim's willingness, to step up and give this a chance. Give it a try, because we will not do it completely right the first time. We know that. There'll be things that we'll want to change, but we have to start somewhere, and this is a fantastic start with monies that we already have available to do that, to put individuals to work that want a chance to work. And that's, if that's not what our goal is in the community, that we have misguided goals. Our goal should be to help anyone and everyone that wants a chance to help, and if we can and we have the ability, then we should. And that's exactly what you're doing, and Tim, I can't say enough about your organization that has stepped up to take the lead on this. You have, it's, words can't express our gratitude to you and your people that do this, and the things that, the lives are going to change. You change lives every day, but now you're going to change a different set of lives, and we appreciate that. So I thank you very much for stepping up on this. Any questions of Mr. Wiseman or Mr. Archer?
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Archer, so the $44,304, you would normally spend that for litter collection, no matter, that was already in the budget, and we're not adding money to the budget. Is that correct?
Right. This is not adding anything. That's budgeted, and we normally use that to hire temporary, so that is two temporary salary for a year to go out and pick up litter.
So my other question then is that that does not impact in any way any of the current employees of the city? All that, you were using temporary employees anyway.
We were using temporary employees before. We had one that had been there for a little while, and so we were a little bit concerned trying to make sure that worked out, but he took employment somewhere else, and so then we came back to where we were just doing daily labor, and so it worked.
All right, good.
I just want to make a comment. I'm just really proud of the city for looking at this. This is programs that people have sent me, that they've seen in other areas, and always say, "Why can't Longview do this?" And Longview is doing this. So that's amazing. Thank you to the mayor for putting that out there through the task force, and for you guys for making it work, and the House of Disciples that does such amazing work. So I'm just really proud of the city for putting this into place.
I have one question, and I think it's for Tim. Is there an application process?
Is there an application process for this? I mean, how does one go by applying for?
Yes, ma'am. It basically comes down to them having a background check. There's a vetting process to it and application process, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I love the program. Two salaries, is that just two temp salaries, or is that divided up in the event someone, it doesn't work out, or how does that go?
Yeah, we'll always keep it as two different positions as best we can. We feel like there will be, you know, plenty of opportunities to help people, and there will be plenty of people that need the help, so we'll keep it in two positions.
And the reason I was asking is because, you know, just making sure that it won't be like spread out. $44,000 is not a whole lot of money, but it is enough to help people to get up on their feet and making sure it won't be like six people. Okay?
Yeah, exactly, and obviously, what we'd like to see is businesses within the community step up and offer some help too. The city was incredible to step up and begin this pilot program, but as we continue to move forward, if businesses will jump onboard as well and open up some positions for us, then obviously, the more options we have, the better offer be for the community.
Great.
This is our template that this task force came up with.
Right.
And this is just one of the many programs that we've put into place for this, through this task force, but this is a template that any business in town can step up and say, "Okay, I've got, I need X amount of work done for X amount of dollars, and this is what the job entails, and we hire temps or whatever, and give these, give this a chance to help our homeless population have jobs that provide for them a way to make a difference out of where they are." And so, this is our first step forward, and it's a big step, Duane and Tim, and I hope we have many, many more businesses that will step up and say, "I see value in this, and I see an opportunity in this to help, and I see a chance to make a difference in the community and in someone's lives," and I hope that's what our businesses will look and see because if we can put individuals to work that want to go to work, guess what? They become no longer homeless.
Sure.
And then we decrease our homeless population, which is our goal. So, thank you, guys. Y'all are really, really special. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Out of the community interest, Mr. Moore.
Food for fines. If anybody has an outstanding library fine due between now and November 20th, you can pay that fine off with a can of food or a box. For every box, knock off $1 up to $20. This is an excellent opportunity to get your fines paid off and help the community. Second, Saturday is Veterans Day, and I would urge all of us to take a moment to thank a veteran for their service to our country. Say a prayer for those active-duty men and women who are currently serving in harm's way, that they make it home safely to their families. If you have not been out to Veterans Plaza at Teague Park, this is an excellent opportunity for you to do that. That is a very moving display of veterans of all wars. And Andy, I know you were out there Saturday with a veterans' activity, and I thank you for doing that, taking the time out of your day to do that. And finally, I want to thank Pine Tree Primary School, Middle School, and High School for their veterans program today. Got all sorts of things from pre-K and kindergarteners. Every campus gave us cookies. It was an excellent program, and I just want to thank Pine Tree ISD for thinking of us and doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Snodgrass.
I have nothing, ma'am.
Ms. Williams.
Good evening. Veteran's time is so monumental to our country. Today, I had an opportunity to represent the city, the mayor, at the ribbon cutting for our new program, Go Vent. It is a partnership, a regional partnership between East Texas Council of Governments, Longview Transit, Amtrak, Go Bus, and of course, the city of Longview, and I tack us on there because they were at our house today. And that being said, now veterans can actually travel from Longview or Marshall to the Overton Brooks VA Center in Shreveport. We all know that our soldiers are often forgotten about, and so this now provides a sustainable opportunity in that they can travel there for $30, which is a reasonable fee. So, this is really great for our community. It will have a regional purpose as well in regard to partnerships. People can come from all over, and you can actually book your ticket on amtrak.com, which is huge, and that goes back to the connectivity piece that we continue to promote in our community. So, today was a really good day for Longview, and while there, I was, also had the pleasure to just share with people under the leadership of our mayor and council, we recently have made a significant donation. I think it was $50,000, wasn't it, to the Veterans Plaza at Teague Park? So, that just goes to further show how dedicated we are to our veterans. So, to all who have served our country, our state, thank you for your service. Thank you for being there for someone like me.
Ms. Snodgrass.
Just would ask that we move to excuse Mr. Pirtle. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nothing else.
Mr. Wright.
I think there, yeah. Miniature Sand Land will be opening tomorrow, Carmella's Mini Sand Land, and it is Carmella's, but I think somebody who doesn't get much recognition is her whipping boy, maybe, Mark, her husband, who does everything she tells him to do. So, this will start tomorrow, and it's a beautiful thing, and I hope y'all can get out to see it.
Did you do the run the other night, David?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Forgot all of my plans.
Okay, okay. Mr. Willard?
No, thanks.
Okay. Longview Green and Clean is Saturday, November 11th. From 8:00 a.m. to noon at Lear Park, you can recycle your electronics, tires, batteries, motor oil, and more. Let's make a less-littered Longview. And you know, this is a big deal. For people to understand it, you can take your stuff there, and it's disposed of, and this is a great way to do it instead of throwing it out somewhere where we have to pick it up someplace else. So, let's try to make Longview a cleaner city by participating in things like this. I know, David, you've been very instrumental in litter cleanup in the Spring Hill area, and we need to continue this all throughout Longview. So, take advantage of this opportunity that we're giving to you. It's free. Drop it off, we'll take it for you. The Longview Walk-Bike Survey is open until December 1st. Please go to longviewtexas.gov/walkbike and complete the survey for a chance to win a bike. But more than a chance to win the bike, we want your input on what you think about the walking and bike controls that we could potentially be doing here in the future. So, if you want to be put on the list, then take the time to fill out the survey. It's very important. Longview City Offices will be closed Thursday and Friday, November 23rd and 24th in observance of Thanksgiving holiday. Sanitation Department will be closed Thursday, Thanksgiving Day. I'm so thankful that they're closed on Thursday, Duane. These guys need a break, so thank you for letting them have Thanksgiving Day off. That's wonderful. Normal Thursday pickup will move to Friday that week. Upcoming events, there are several upcoming events throughout the Longview community. Longview Museum of Fine Arts presents live music by Brumley and Gardner this Friday, November 10th at 7:00 p.m. That should be a really neat concert. Please try to make plans to go there. Honor American Idol Lobo Stadium, Saturday, November 11th, 7:00 p.m. A Longview tradition for over 25 years, they pay tribute to our veterans, active military, and first responders. If you've ever been to that, you should go. The bands play, the high schools, the junior highs. It is a really neat celebration for our veterans. It's patriotic, it's very moving, and it's a wonderful time to go out and fellowship with your neighbors and your friends in our community, but just to pay respect to our veterans. So, it's a great celebration, and they have a great fireworks thing, too. So, go out there and check that out. Theater Longview presents Little Women, November 9th to 12th at 7:00 p.m. at Grace Cross United Methodist Church. Kilgore College presents Greater Tuna, November 6th, that's right, Greater Tuna, November 16th to 19th at Kilgore Campus. For more information on these events, please check out our calendar at visitlongviewtexas.com and learn more. A few things I want to talk about real quick before I go to Go Give a Gala. Voting. This week, I know I posted on Facebook, but I was able to go vote on Tuesday, and it was so convenient to go to any polling place in Gregg County without having to worry about which one you're going to. So, hats off to Gregg County for doing that. I think that really improves the ability of people to go out and vote. I know it wasn't a lot on the agenda to vote for. It was more ordinances or amendments, but still, it made it very easy, so I think that's very important that we take advantage of that and exercise your right to vote when you can. I also was able to attend the Troop 201 reburial of the time capsule, which was a really, really neat thing. And they dug it up this year, and they're going to stick it back in the ground, and 50 years from now, maybe some of y'all will be here, I won't be, and they'll uncover this thing. I don't know what they put in it because it's pretty much a secret. They'll know that in 50 years, but you know, that's, it's really encouraging to see this group, this troop, and these men and women that take their time to mentor these young people for the discipline and the care they show towards what they're doing. It's really a pretty neat deal. So, if you missed it, check out my Facebook page. I have pictures of the capsule. I had no idea what it looked like. It's like a little, like a torpedo. It looks like a torpedo, and it's sealed, and it's, they put it in the ground inside of a concrete tube, and they put a cap over it, and they have eight bolts, and then they have another cap that goes over that. You're not breaking into that thing. That thing is secure. Then they pour concrete over the whole top of it and cement it in the ground. It's unbelievable. It was very impressive, and I was very impressed to be, to do that. Also, I was able to attend the unity walk this Saturday that Patrick Johnson put together at Longview High School, and it was very encouraging to see people out there walking together, hand in hand, without any concern about race, religious beliefs, political beliefs, color, anything. It was just walking for unity because, and I stated there at that event, we're all on this planet together, and you're not getting off until the good Lord takes you off. So, why are we fighting each other instead of holding hands with each other? So, it was a great walk. I got to meet some people that I haven't met before, and it was fun to just be there with young people and older people, and you know, our community's got to do that. We're here together. Let's get along and make the most of it, and make the best of it, not the most of it, the best of it, because that's our job, you know? That's what we're here for. So, thanks to Patrick Johnson for doing that. It was a really neat walk, and I appreciate that ability to do that. Upcoming events, Go Give a Gala, okay? Saturday, January 6th, 7:00 p.m. This is going to really be a neat event. I'm just telling you, it's going to be a lot of fun that evening. We're going to honor some people, but more than anything, we're raising money for a homeless initiative, and I'm going to say it every time I have a chance, this is a chance for anyone that wants to put their money where their mouth is. Buy a ticket, buy a table, be a sponsor, whatever you want to do. We want you there. We want your presence. We want your support because we're helping Longview. Every penny of this event will go towards helping the homeless situation in Longview. Not one penny will go anywhere else. And so, Julie Woods has done an amazing job of getting this event together. She has spent countless hours with city staff, with the people at Mon Cop, and it's going to be a wonderful event. And if you miss it, you have no reason to complain about what's going on because I'd be very disappointed if you want to complain about something and not take an active role in it because it's time to be active, proactive, and get involved. So, thank you for what we're doing here. Our survey, thought it was pretty appropriate. Veterans Day is fast approaching, and with it comes thoughts of our military. Do you believe Neely is appropriate while the National Anthem is played? And I wasn't trying to be political with this. I just want to know what East Texas thought about this because I know it's forefront in sports and in entertainment and things like that, so I want to know where we stood. 81% said not appropriate, and I respect that. I respect 19% that said it is appropriate. I'm sure they have their reasons. For me, I will always stand for the National Anthem because I will always honor men and women that fought and died for me, and a lot of them fought and died, and didn't know what they were fighting and dying for, and didn't have a choice, but didn't ask why. They answered the call, and they went and served. So, they'll always have my respect and my honor and my thanks, so I will always stand. That's just my opinion, but everyone is welcome with their own opinions on that subject. But let me tell you what's even more fun. That was a great survey question. I appreciate all the participants, but I'll tell you what, this is the funnest survey question I have ever asked, and I got some of the most encouraging, funny responses of any question I've ever asked in a survey in almost three years. And people have such a great sense of humor, and it just lifts me up to see the wonderful, funny, happy, carefree responses. For fun, being the foodie that I am, I look forward to Thanksgiving and already think about my favorite foods. What are your must-have Thanksgiving side dishes? Okay, this is interesting. Mashed potatoes, 52%. Dressing, 72. Stuffing, 30. Green beans, 45. Cranberry sauce, 47. Rolls, 62. Corn, 20. Salad, 18. That's pretty much my absolute, it's my order that I would go with. Salad, who eats salad at Thanksgiving? I want some meat, I want some, but funny, funny responses. Green beans, is that a green bean casserole or just green beans? Where's the pumpkin pie?